So, morning Jerry.
I believe you're right.
Thank you.
I'm ready to start having this decision. There's something else that could change now. Right with that there and not what? I don't know.
Right.
So, they're pushing certain budget.
It's like all it's like the sound and people.
The others.
People and stuff.
What they do is the talk.
For this one, this year, even with all his money, he still didn't get a little bit of. In room time. She's watching. Yes. So. Okay. Three years. I love seeing you. Watching that from front when you can have some of the books. That is the second, second class.
Wow. She said, yes. It's my next block. I did this. People, but it's.
Okay, good morning, everyone. It's Sam. Ask you please rise today for the open turn session leaves before we come here and finish our policy meetings. Apparently, Father, we assembled today and conducted business of the county and asked for your blessing. Let's move over a meeting. On Saturday, we'll celebrate the birthday of the National Guard. It's the oldest military organization in America. It was established in sixteen thirty-six in Massachusetts. These everyday Americans have been called for military operations throughout the world. We thank you for these soldiers that serve our communities, our states and country. We ask that you bless them and protect them. Thank you for this day and this wonderful time of year. We ask you to bless our Jewish friends as they sit. We'll celebrate the season of Hanukkah starting on Sunday evening. Protect the nation of Israel. Help us to always be their ally. Were we celebrate this Christmas season? For how you set your son and light of the world. Father, this song that reads, with God as our father, brothers all are we. Walk with my brother in perfect harmony. Peace be begin with me. Let this moment be now. Those beautiful words are written in the song. Let there be peace on earth. And we love, maybe remember your love. Share it not only during the season, but throughout the year. Their words and actions make a positive and encouraging impact to each other. We ask you for your guidance throughout our meeting. Since we only pray in your name, amen.
Amen.
Would you leave this in the Lord, the United States of America, to the Father, for his descendants, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great and just as well?
Good morning. Before we can lead our commissioners, public meetings. Um, last week, we had, we had sent our prayer. We had prayed for, uh, you know, Bexham family and the Wolf family, Andrew Wolf. We hit encouraging news this week that, uh, Andrew Wolf has now, uh, been able to stand up out of bed. He's not able to communicate yet, speaking, but he is on the way to recovery. And that's encouraging news to hear about our, our National Guardsmen. We continue our prayers and support for him and pray for a full recovery. We continue our prayers for the Bexham family. As she was laid to rest this past weekend, Arlington National Cemetery. So at this time, we'll come here and commission this public meeting. And ask for approval of the minutes of previous meeting. I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Do we public comments on agenda items only? No line.
We have one comment online from Blair Stewart seventeen. Thank you to all that serves our county. God bless everyone.
Hey, thank you. And at this time, we'll move on to bid openings. Nikki.
Good morning. We had a bid due for janitorial services for the Employee Health and Wellness Center, and we received eight bids for that. Uh, Clean Concept eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars, and these are annual costs. Um, DSC Solutions thirty-seven thousand fifty dollars, Eagle Janitorial Supply Services ninety-seven thousand two hundred dollars. General Services forty thousand, M and M Odds and Ends thirty-nine thousand fifty dollars. Select Building Services thirty-six thousand six hundred sixty. Two. Um, sixty-seven thousand five hundred seventy dollars and Young Hands Cleaning Services one hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I get it. My guess is that's sweeping. That's a typo, but.
No, it's not.
It's not?
It's not.
That's how it's filmed. Um, um. Like with the, the price differentiation, like there's almost a hundred thousand dollars difference in some of these. Are they all offering the same service?
Yes. Yeah.
So now the one doesn't do way more than the.
No, it's, it's laid out exactly what they need to do on. Oh.
Okay.
Schedule. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nikki.
Yep.
Who are the reports?
Hey, presented for your ratification, our invoices due through December seventeenth, twenty twenty-five to be paid on December tenth, twenty twenty-five. In the amount of one million three hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. At sixty-nine point four eight percent of the general fund, one point three three percent out of ARPA, point five seven out of Act thirteen. Four point six seven out of grants, three point nine four out of RMS and twenty point oh two percent out of escrow.
Okay, thank you. Um, what should we accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Any questions or comments? Very now, all fair side. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Jennifer.
Morning, Jenny. Oh, I have two informational items for you today. Um, we have vacancies on a few of our boards. The first is Lake Home County Planning Commission. And one vacancy. That is a four-year term with monthly meetings on the third Thursday. And then in our zoning hearing board, we have a vacancy for a regular member and two vacancies for alternate members. Those are five-year terms with a meeting on the fourth Wednesday. So if anyone's interested in applying, they can go to lakehome.org and fill out.
Okay, thank you, Jenny.
Thanks.
Okay, we have update from the, um, golf course. Kristen Justin are here. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Good morning, everybody. Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be here today. We are here to provide an update on this past season at Waiter Golf Course. Uh, last year, we were here at this pretty much the same time, and we were reporting, we had record numbers. Uh, we had a great year. And we're happy to report that we've six, we've surpassed those numbers this year. Uh, we did just over sixty-four thousand rounds. It was like sixty-four thousand eight hundred rounds this year, which was uh, about a thousand to fifteen hundred more than we did last year, which is great. Uh, this led to, again, record, um, revenue and a just an outstanding season overall. Um, the season wasn't without its challenges. We did have a challenging year weather-wise, which led to some less than ideal conditions. But we faced the adversity. We were able to get through it, recover what we needed to do, and through the help of our amazing members and patrons that regularly the club, the course, we're able to still have a really, uh, successful year. Um, we're gonna be bringing some money back into the course, doing a little updates on the course, the clubhouse, purchasing some new equipment. And we're grateful to be in a position to be able to do that. Um, in addition, we're also able to, every year, we make our yearly cart payment. We're able to do that. We're also gonna be making an additional cart payment. Uh, so we'll only have a couple more payments left on those, and that'll be done, and we'll be kicking back, uh, an additional amount of money, uh, overall. Uh, we do have a check here today.
So, we'd like to, uh, present the county with one hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred sixty dollars, um, that covers, uh, additional cart payment as well as funding back to the county from the golf course.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep, and we're, we're very grateful to be here, and we thank you guys for the support, and, uh, hopefully we continue to have some success and keep doing good things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So. The first term I ran. As I knocked on people's doors. All I heard was sell the golf course. Get rid of the golf course. It's bleeding us dry. And, uh, since I've been here my six years, every time you guys have come to us for money was to do the loans for the carts. Same payments, you're making fifth and sixth payment today, plus you've provided money back, good management. And not everybody golfs, but it's an asset for Lake Home County. And, uh, as long as it doesn't cost the county extra money, be back to us and asking us. But I appreciate every month, every, uh, every year when you guys bring your budget to us. Not only do you have money in the bank, and you're able to provide us some extra money and pay things back. But you develop your own budget where you're doing improvements to the course. So the course has drastically been improved over the years. Different things, you know, you put money back into it. And which helps the members over there to enjoy the course. So we appreciate your good management and, um, you know, are thankful that you're here to turn this golf course around because at one time it was a, uh, it's all life support and leading the county. Yeah, thank you.
When Scott was knocking on doors, there were a lot of people that said, get off my porch. Beyond just like sell the golf course. Now, the thing is, as we met through this year, and, you know, we've been doing it now for the last couple of years that Mark and I have been here, um, the most frustrating thing about your business is the weather. And it never cooperates like you'd want it to cooperate. This year was no different. Um, we appreciate the, the challenges that you, um, that you just have to make on the fly because you don't know how the weather's gonna be this summer. Maybe it's gonna rain early again and dry out quickly like it did last year and, um. So that, that would be as, as the rest of our businesses try to plan, you know, strategically, economically and all this stuff. But what I appreciate about what you guys do, whatever one in your industry, I mean, it's part of your industry, but what you guys do and you've done so well. Um, I'm surprised that we, I knew going through that the numbers were good, but I'm surprised we surpassed last year. Cause this year weather-wise was way tougher than last year weather-wise. And, um, so, you know, kudos to you guys, and I just wanna echo everything because I, I did hear when we were running. Um, it wasn't the only thing I heard, but there were a lot of people that were like, what about the golf course? What about the golf course? They weren't telling me to sell it. But it, they're, the golf course was on a lot of people's minds just because not everyone owns, not every county owns a golf course and, and you guys have certainly made it an asset, and, and we thank you for that.
Yeah, it's been great to been part of that journey because I was involved from day one when I know where it was, right? So, uh, to kind of get it from there.
Was it good?
No, it was not good.
Is that his way of taking all the credit?
Uh, to get it to where it is now, when we have meetings with you, we appreciate the support and it is fun to be self-sustaining. Where we can put money back in to keep making improvements and also take some money back. Uh, it's great and, um, yeah, I'll say, I mean, White Deer was probably one of the exceptions in, in the Northeast that actually was ahead. Because of the weather challenges this year, um, most of our courses were behind prior years. And so it, it shows that it's getting community and local support, um, as well, which is great.
You guys came in, there was a, a large council payable that was not paid. And you guys, uh, don't pay off and then turn it into positive that is.
So we'll, we'll make sure this gets on Facebook because even, um, last week or the week before, when we announced a half a mill tax increase. There were several comments of, yes, but the golf course keeps taking money.
Right.
So I, I want everybody to see this is a check for a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the golf course. You know, if we were a private investor, we may not accept a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars as, as good enough profit, but when, you know, as Commissioner Messina said, this is a quality of life that is added. Um, you know, we have, we've lost a lot of swimming pools, um, throughout our county because the municipalities can't seem to afford to run them at at least a break even. I'm a big proponent that, uh, if you can have quality of life, it doesn't cost the taxpayers money because not everybody you golf, not everybody uses a swimming pool. You gotta do it at a break even. Um, and that's acceptable to me with, with this golf course. This is obviously way more than acceptable. If we can generate fifty to a hundred thousand dollar worth of profit annually, um, that's, that says a lot for what you guys have done with this golf course over the years. Um, I hear a lot of people say, you know, that the quality of the course itself is much better than it's been over the years. So we appreciate that from you as well because you've made investments in the course while still making a profit. So that's, that's just huge. Uh, but again, I think it's very important that our residents understand that you're not taking money from the taxpayers anymore. I know it was that way for many, many years. But this is a huge positive, huge, a huge profit for a county-owned, uh, facility. We wouldn't do it without a management team. So we also appreciate, uh, a management team and, and, uh, and look at what you guys are doing and ask ourselves the questions. Do we do management teams in other areas that can do the same thing for us?
Sure.
Uh, now we thank you guys a lot for what you've done. Appreciate it.
First, I had a conversation six years ago. I said, don't come ask for money.
Yeah.
The only thing we did was to fill the loan for the carts, which is being paid back, so.
Yeah, and we said it's, we'll, we'll pay that back. I just, I can't afford it all upfront, right? So it was like, hey, can we, can we work out a program to pay that back? But yeah, I mean, add on to that. We haven't asked for a dollar for eight years.
I'm sure you've told us this before. How long will the carts last?
Yeah, a couple more years of them.
Okay. So once they're paid off, we'll have them.
Yes.
We'll be able to run them into the ground?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the plan.
Last one was about years old.
Yeah, last one.
They were, they were.
We're not gonna last that.
It won't last that. Okay.
Yeah.
I, I was just gonna bring a point, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Uh, that a lot of people believe that this only serves a small segment of our county. But these gentlemen, I'm sure will attest, a number of nonprofits use the golf course as a resource for, for paying funds.
Um, and I think probably hundreds of thousands of dollars are earned for our local nonprofits every year to help, help all of those charities. That's very good.
We do a very commendable job in coordinating all of that, making sure that those events can happen as well as the members continue to use the course. So it, it serves a community benefit as a whole, if you don't look, if you look at it that way.
Maybe you should, you're in charge, you're in charge of tournaments.
Yeah, yeah, we do. We do a, a ton of, of nonprofit charity tournaments, um, very, very large ones. Hope Enterprises does an annual one every year. I know that's one of the biggest in the area. Um, Chamber of Commerce does a good one. Um, St. John Newman does a, does an outing with us, and they, they're a great cause that we love, we love to support. We love that relationship. But yeah, we do anywhere from forty to fifty events a year, and it's a big part of why we are successful is we have these great charities, these great organizations that all host their outings with us, and they continue to come back year, year over year.
Saying they just.
Yeah. Yeah, and a lot of people re- renew for multiple years. They'll, they'll renew right away as the day of their outing. They'll renew for next year, so they wanna lock that date in, so. As long as we do everything that they ask of us and everything runs well, they're happy, we're happy, and everybody has a good, good outcome from it.
That's thousands of dollars for those nonprofits.
So.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you take the average outing that's a, a charity event, you know, some maybe only raise a few thousand dollars for a smaller thing, some raise fifty plus thousand dollars. So if you add all that up, even at a ten thousand dollar average, that's half a million dollars probably charitable contribution that we help with.
Per year?
Yeah.
Per year. Thank you for all the great work. We appreciate the partnership and look forward to it in the future. Fairly here for the weather.
Yes.
Thank you for the support.
I can do that. The best.
Close. Thank you.
Like to give a picture of you with Chuck.
Yeah.
So. That's here. That's in our controller real quick. So make sure.
He already got the chance.
So we're good there. I'll bring him in.
He doesn't really care if you're in the picture.
Controller?
No, that's okay.
And before you guys get rid of the golf carts, always do like, you know, golf cart derby or something. People that don't golf.
We're, we're trying, we're trying.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate everything.
At this time, we'll recess commissioners' public meeting for salary board. You know, salary board's just time.
Okay, the first item I have is vote to approve the salary board minutes from the December fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Hey, is there a motion to accept?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll say. On fair side.
And then I have vote to approve the following salary board actions. Is Holly here?
I don't see her.
The first item I have in the Prothonitary's office is to add a criminal processing clerk position pay grade five to the TDA.
Okay, we had met with, uh, our Prothonitary. They had to help. They would like that disposition back on, uh, what this position would be doing would be, um, instrumental with the courts to help collect cost of fines in the county that are now approximately forty million dollars of uncollected cost of fines. So it's instrumental that we get this position back in place to help with that workload that he, of course, um, are gonna go after recently after the first of the year.
Right.
So is there a motion to accept that position?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second? Second? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Right?
Yeah, I'm aye, but I, I just wanted to make a comment that I, I think, uh, I'm an aye with the stipulation that, uh, if, if we don't see a return on this investment of this forty million dollars, we need to evaluate this position again at the end of next year.
I would agree with that. So that's carried for five oh, four oh. Probably not here. Okay, next one, Nikki?
Yes, in the adult probation office, um, remove an APO officer position pay grade nine from the TDA.
Motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll say.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
And then in adult probation, add an administrative case officer position pay grade seven to the TDA.
Your motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Off your side?
Aye.
And that's, um, I believe the course are moving the pay grade nine, changing the title, um, bringing in a different type of a position and lower pay grade. Okay, DPS, need the, the EMS.
Um, add a regional field coordinator position to the TDA. This is paid for by the state.
And speaking of them, this is a position that's, uh, we share with other counties, I believe. And, um, it's a partnership and then it's all funded by the state, so it's important that we have our, our own regional director or coordinator for the county of Lake Home. Coordination theater counties are, are working on this. This is requested by them also, so. You said it's funded by the state?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to accept. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second again with, with the comment that, uh, you know, we, we removed this position. Um, so we're really not adding a new position. We have removed it kind of in error, uh, because of the, uh, inspections that it does in the fire departments and EMS areas, so. Yeah.
Absolutely. Um, so all fair side?
Aye. And then we're gonna remove the administrative specialist position pay grade six from the TDA, and that's as of one three twenty-six. Uh, this position is, um, is non-exempt at the moment.
Okay, motion to accept.
What is, what do you mean by non-exempt?
They can have overtime.
Uh, okay. Um. Yeah, I'll make the motion.
So we're, we're removing the, the position to have, uh, currently gets overtime and then we'll, we'll add up the position that is an exempt position.
Correct.
And is this also funded by the state?
It is not. Well. Hmm, part of it might be because of the PMA reporting that this position does, but not fully funded.
And this is a position that the, the current, the current administrative specialist is retired.
Correct.
Okay, this is critical because of the penal report.
Yes.
Yes, which brings in about six. Five hundred, six hundred thousand a year?
Yeah, I would say between five and six, yeah.
Yeah, so it's critical that we have this position. Uh, motion to accept, second, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we're gonna add an administrative coordinator position pay grade six exempt to the TDA as of one four twenty twenty-six.
Accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side?
Aye. In facilities management, remove the deputy director of facilities management position pay grade twelve from the TDA, and that'll be as of one one twenty-two six.
I'll make that motion. I'll say. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
In military affairs, add a VA assistant position pay grade six to the TDA.
Okay. Natalie's with us today. She brought us to our attention. Two weeks ago or last week, we met with you on, uh, during the week, uh, we explained this necessity of this position. We wanna make sure that all our veterans are serviced. And there's not a waiting list of months where they get help. It's critical that we take care of our veterans. Uh, you, um, were willing to work with us, I'm sorry, and we appreciate that. Do you have any other comments you like that?
Thank you. Now, I, I, just to piggyback on what Scott said, you know, we, we always talk about how we, we need to support our veterans. And, you know, we're, we're trying to do everything with our, our taxpayers in mind, and we try to keep taxes as low as possible. But if there's, you know, any places that, that we should all chip in, it is to support our veterans. So, um, you know, we, I had no problems adding this position on because, you know, it's, it's one thing to say thank you for your service and then, but when we have an opportunity to actually do something to thank them, um, we needed to do that.
And they have a very small staff and Mike retired. Natalie was, you were promoted and then Jeff's there and it's basically you two, so you're short actually person, so. And with Keely down there, it's a very small office. How many veterans did you say you serviced?
Yeah, over eight, almost nine thousand.
So you have nine thousand veterans in the county, but the staff of four. So it's, it's important that, um, we take care of our veterans and appreciate you.
I just saw Mike this morning, by the way. He was here, wasn't he? Yeah, I saw him. I, I may be the lone guy out on this one. Uh, my, my concern is, is we've asked other departments within the county to reduce staff. Um, so I've given this a lot of thought of. And, and, and again, I, I agree wholeheartedly with what you guys have said about supporting veterans and making sure you're not just saying thank you, but you're not supporting that position. But I'm concerned about what we've done as a, as a county, reducing staff. We've asked other members of our team to reduce staff. I get it's a small department. We're asking for one reduction. We've had other staffs that we've reduced five and six people out of. Not so sure that we're, we're jumping the gun. Maybe we should evaluate this again in six months. If the position needs to be there, especially since it's been taken out of budget, that's my, just my good comment for that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion? And are you, do we motion already?
We did not motion. I'll make the motion.
Second? Second? Um, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
That does not carry. And public defender?
Um, add an assistant public defender position union to the TDA. I wanna make a note that this is also not budgeted for.
How many? She's not here, is she? Maybe they're short. You know?
I do not know.
I think two.
How two?
And this is also gonna take away from the, uh,
Contracts.
The contracts that they have to outsource.
Uh, for. So it's not pure loss. It's, it actually saves us money, so it may, there's a balance. It may not be even, but it's.
Right. I think for the salary of the, of the position and for what's contracted out, I think it would be better.
Okay, have we evaluated number? Do we know the number?
I, I'm gonna ask, can we table this and look at the cost?
Yeah, I was gonna ask for this to be tabled.
Tabled.
Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to table?
Sure, I'll make that motion. I'll say.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, stable.
Um, and this next one, remove the administrative assistant slash paralegal in training position pay grade six from the TDA, and then we would in turn, um, add a paralegal position pay grade seven to the TDA. The training has been completed, and there was an agreement then that this person, that it would be switched to a paralegal position.
Okay. Motion to accept?
Yeah, I'll make that one. Second?
I'm gonna second, but again, with, with the comment of, uh, fortunately, this was not budgeted as well. So we, we have a situation where in being fair to any other training position was, was also promoted. Once training was done, I think we gotta follow through with it.
Yeah.
Again, this negatively affects the budget that, uh, we, we've already presented, so we'd have to make an adjustment.
So there's second, all fair side?
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Okay.
And lastly, the, um, to approve the new telecommunications pay scale as a one one twenty-two six.
Okay, so. And you can see that there. Shannon, would you like to elaborate on this? That's your generalness?
Yes, and thank you for putting it on the salary board. As people know, our nine one one center is struggling a bit. As are a lot of the nine one one centers across the state. So I've met with a member of our HR team, Lee Moore Laramie, who is also very instrumental in our interim Department of Safety Director, Stacy Folk, and we visited other nine one one sites to get a feel for what their struggles were, and a lot of it had to do with salary. So we wanted to be more competitive within the area, maybe pull some some people back who have experience, so with having a starting rate that would be a little bit more competitive. It might save us in the long run with having to retrain some of our people. So we, like a telecommunicator trainee, I believe our starting rate, Mike, you can probably correct me on that, I think was roughly eighteen and a half, maybe a little more, bumping that trainee up to twenty dollars an hour. And then telecommunicator one, telecommunicator two, telecommunicator three, giving those those bumps with additional experience. And there is, there is a a schedule to which they would be moving from a trainee to a telecommunicator one based on how other nine one one centers work. So we were trying to be in alignment with that. And we did offer a previous bonus of five thousand dollars after they hit certain milestones. But with raising the wage, that bonus schedule was taken down to a thousand dollars. There was a four thousand dollar savings there. So it's just in an effort to recruit recruit new staff to our nine one one center, like I said, which is struggling, and that's a critical part of the county services, so that's what we were presenting to the board.
Yeah, it's interesting. We talked to someone yesterday who's pretty much done everything in the emergency fields there is. They've been in the fire, they've been in EMS. They had about forty years in the field. They said their most stressful job they ever had was a nine one one operator. All.
Yep.
And, you know, they just don't answer a phone. They're handling life and death situations. And when someone calls them, it could be their worst day in their life. So they have to remain calm. They have to give that sense of calmness to the person on the line that helps on the way. They're the foundation of the emergency services, because that's the first person that they communicate with. It's critical that they have the proper training. And at the same time, they're able to have a life because they work very long hours. Sometimes as much as sixteen hours a day. To the shortage. So.
Yeah, and this rate would be instrumental in recruiting new people to give those current telecommunications a more work, balanced work, family life. Because they are putting in a lot of hours and we want to try to eliminate burnout. And not only that, we want them to be their best. So.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, the comment I'll make, you know, again, looking at the total budget idea and picture when you look at this, so, you know. The one thing that I want to be very transparent with everybody, you know, we've asked for reductions, we've asked for reductions in staff, we've asked for reductions in payroll, and then we asked for an increase in somebody's individual pays. Sometimes that comes across as, what are you doing? You took from me to do this one kind of scenario. This is a scenario where currently they're slightly underpaid in a very difficult position that we have had a lot of struggles in filling positions. The other thing that we are in the middle of doing within the DPS department is a new director, which, you know, fortunately, when you have one that's been around for a while, that pays a lot higher than than your new person's pay will be. So we'll have some cost savings in the director, the deputies' salaries, which will make a difference. And I think we're also in the midst of evaluating that entire management team with the structure. So I think right now, today, we have we've got a couple of directors and four deputies, and maybe at the end of the day, we have one director and three deputies, which will also be a cost saving. So the money being spent to really get the staffs level up will be saved in a management salary level somewhere along the line.
Good point.
Well, as Scott said, you know, we, our county government's big and lots of it is planning and long range, and we have lots of meetings and discussions and you know, things with attorneys and then there's, but there are a couple of departments like, you know, the Sheriff's Department and the nine one one center that you know, it has to be now and it can be life and death. So in those instances, you know, we never want to cut corners and we want to give them every opportunity as Shannon said, not just to be there, but to be at their best, because you know, whether they're at their best or not could save a life, and it happens every day.
And I shared yesterday, this feels so critical. Public safety, EMS, you know, as I was growing up, you heard the word Dallas. And Dallas had a label on them for years because of JFK. And for the last eighteen months, you've heard Butler. Whereas a day goes by, you don't turn on the TV, they talk about Butler. They had that negative label on him now because they weren't prepared. And then tragedy happened. We don't want to ever have that all in coming county. So we want to make sure that we have the professionals that are trained and that they're rested and that they're doing the job that they're prepared to do. And the preparations there and the planning's there. So that our EMS field and our all the volunteers have that training and the paid services are there. So that we make sure that we do it the right way. All right, we're going to motion. Thanks for the motion. Is there any motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. All fair side? Aye. Thank you. And thank you to nine one one operators for what they do. It's a very stressful job and they work crazy hours too. Okay, at this time, we'll adjourn salary board. Beating Commissioner's public meeting. Personal actions, Mike?
I'm always leaving when I get up. See you later.
You know, happy day, guys.
The personal. I guess not. Well, good morning.
Morning.
We're going to approve the following personal actions as conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of background check and all other employment conditions outlined here in attachment A. The first one's an adult probation. Riley Regal, administrative case officer, pay grade seven, full-time. At twenty-one dollars, point one five three six cents per hour at seventy-five hours per pay period, effective date December seventh twenty twenty-five. The next two, we can actually take off and hold. Those will be pending the next salary board meeting, so they're following items. Let's see. The fourth one there in the public defender's office, Cody Engelhardt, this is a promotion to paralegal pay grade seven, full-time at eighteen dollars, point nine five one seven seven three cents per hour. At seventy-five hours per pay period, effective date December seventh, twenty twenty-five. And then the last one there is public safety communication center, Jessica Ivan Kena, telecommunicator two, pay grade nine, full-time at twenty-three dollars per hour. That should actually be an eighty hours per pay period. Anticipating started on the date of December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Approving the adult probation public center paralegal and the public safety communication center.
Correct. The other two are pending salary board act.
And motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Morning, guys.
Morning.
Lake County, on behalf of the course, together with our single county authority, which is West Branch Drug and Alcohol Abuse Commission, is requesting three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to support the Lake County probation with restrictive conditions treatment programs, formerly known as the County Intermediate Punishment Program. This grant consists of two separate programs. Lake County probation with restrictive DUI conditions, which targets offenders convicted of driving under the influence of alcohol and facing mandatory sentences, in addition to Lake County Treatment Courts, which is our drug and DUI courts. Both Lake County Treatment Courts are accredited through the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. The items that this grant covers is drug and alcohol testing for probation for treatment courts, treatment services, and salary and benefits of one of our adult probation officers, officers, which oversees the caseload of the probation with restrictive DUI conditions. Overall, our anticipated outcomes of this program is to reduce drug and alcohol use, ultimately reduce recidivism, and reduce the criminal caseloads of the courts. This grant allocation is an annual allocation in the state budget. No county taxpayer monies are being used. We've been receiving these funds since the nineteen nineties. And these funds are only to be used for this type of programming and not for anything else.
Eric, these funds have reduced over the years, haven't they?
They have, yes.
One time, I believe they were double.
Yes.
If I recall.
Yes.
Turned over backgrounds over there. It's like six hundred thousand range of the
Yes.
So state's drastically reduced them. Is there motion to accept? Yeah, how long have you been in adult probation?
Well, I've been with the county thirty years, probation maybe twenty-seven years, adult probation.
So what, like, because we've heard from Scott, when tell us you're like on treatment court and the success or what are your thoughts on treatment?
Treatment courts are great. Hey, we've had a lot of success for, you know, what, drug, DUI, mental health veterans. We serve huge population of people.
And the people that are, as we talked about the testing that this will pay for. Some of the people that are in this are being tested like five and six times a week at the beginning, aren't they? Is it that?
No, it's about two to three times a week.
Okay.
About two to three times a week.
But it's that regular and that's
Yeah, we're doing about thirty tests a day for this population of people, yes.
Because Scott has always, you know, he has said when it first showed up with the G O or whatever, that he was kind of a naysayer, that once he saw it in action, he realized the value of it and the reduction in recidivism and actually how it's, you know, changed people's lives.
Yeah, we were one of the first county, not the first, but one of the first that instituted a drug court back in nineteen ninety-eight.
So they went to Connecticut, Judge Brown. Judge Blunt, I think Curly Jackson was with them at the time. Yep, and they went to Connecticut, hard, it seems it was Hartford.
Yep.
Now, we ready to motion, so I'll make the motion. All fair side? Aye. Thank you. Thanks.
Good morning.
He's doing really short stuff.
I did. All right, the first item I have is vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with Farm Cam. This is for APO, this is for the substance abuse testing, and we're making this agreement retroactive for one one twenty-five.
And this is the urine cups, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye.
The next item I have is vote to approve the MOU with Lake County M H I D. This is for the seriously mentally ill individuals who are incarcerated at the prison.
So I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye.
And then I vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with restorative behavioral health. This is an improved budgeted item. We're extending the term an additional year and increasing the hourly rate from two hundred to two twenty. This is for the prison.
I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye.
Okay, then I vote to approve the Patrick Lee Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant application with the Department of Justice in the amount of up to twenty-five thousand. This is for the Sheriff Office Bulletproof Vest to help offset the cost.
Thank you to your staff for applying for this grant. And buying, and it's critical that to make sure that our law enforcement, Sheriff's Office, APO, the ones that wear the vest are properly equipped. They're home safe at night. Motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye.
And the last item I have is vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with D S C Solutions. This is for the janitorial services for the partnership health. This is just extending the term for an additional month while we bid out.
Motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good day.
You too.
Gary, you're up.
Good morning. Item seven point seven is vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with ALS Global. It's a twenty twenty-five approved budgeted item, so ALS is a laboratory that we use as needed. They're not a primary, and we already have an agreement with them, just simply adding testing of phenolics, which we used here just recently still.
Okay. Motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. And then is it twenty twenty-five approved budgeted, correct, Gary?
Yes.
Okay. All fair side? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, guys.
Where you going?
Item seven point eight, a vote to appoint the following, a vote to approve the following reappointments to the Lake County Planning Commission. First is Jason Bolden, second is Dece Rice. I'm raised, voted with a four-year term from January first, twenty twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. We want to thank Jason and Dece for time on the Planning Commission. They've both been there and and been tremendous assets. And dedication, along with the rest of the Planning Commission members, we want to thank them. So all fair side? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Thanks, John. Morning, Cam.
Good morning.
Cam.
Item seven point nine is a vote to approve the amendment with R and J Viral Incorporated in the amount of five thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. This is not an approved budgeted item, but I do have funds available. This is for the emergency repair work in the train line and the courthouse.
If we had a leak over there, it was critical that we got
Yes.
fixed and
They did make the repair, they had a schedule, and they will actually be reducing that by a thousand dollars. So we're actually be getting a good voice for four thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Well, thank everyone's cooperation for working with the contractor, Cam, getting this repaired completed. Motion to accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side? Aye.
And I just would like to quick make the comment, you know, it's things like this, you know, we're always talking about money and I apologize that I'm always talking about money. But, you know, if you don't have a savings account because you depleted the savings accounts over twenty years and you have a plumbing issue, no different than in your house. We have a plumbing issue at the courthouse. It has to be fixed. And if you don't budget properly, you don't have the money for these things. So I'm thankful that Cam's budget allowed for it and that we do have the money available, but this is a minor, a five thousand dollar bill is minor to what could happen in a seventy-year-old building that we have across the street.
Critical that we had that fund balance. So when we have emergencies, we have the money. Mr. Sorten says, if you don't have it, then those repairs don't get done. And in this case, you had a leak above an office affecting the courts because it was their bathroom and with jurors, and so it was something that had to be done. And we had to make sure that got done quickly, properly. Because it had to do sewage.
That's the sad part. It was sewage. Nobody, nobody serves it. You sit in their office, smell sewage from above you because there's a leaking, but
right, can't say we don't have the money, so we have to make sure it's being spilled. Thank you. All fair side? Aye.
I just want to say, I think that building was built the year I was born, and I am not seventy years old, so like, holy cow.
I meant to say a building built in nineteen seventy.
Ah, okay.
But it slipped out of seventy.
It's after he got built in seventy, so I was born in seventy-one. All right. I know I hit seven years old.
Good morning.
I'm good.
But the building looks very
It probably does. Good morning.
Good morning. Seven point one zero, commissioners, we're seeking your approval today to renew the coroners. Good morning. Seven point one zero. Commissioners, we're seeking your approval today to renew um the coroner's software renewal with Thomas Reuters and the amount of two thousand five hundred ninety six dollars and fifty six cents, and this is a budgeted item.
Okay, motion accept. I'll make the motion. A second. All fair side. Aye.
Um, the next couple is going to be um your approval for the um TALI softs, software. Um, so seven point eleven is going to be for civil court. That's the pathonitaries office and the amount of twenty six thousand six hundred forty five dollars.
Accept. I'll make the motion. A second. All fair side. Aye.
Seven point one two. Um, again, uh, this is for the Orphans Row software and the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and six dollars, and it is um budgeted item.
She looks up. I'll make the motion. A second. All fair side. Aye.
Apologies. Um, the last one in this one and the next one, they're all, um, mine's going to use Act thirteen monies. We did have the budget, but we're going to use Act thirteen's.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, seven point one three, um, seeking your approval for the TALI soft software for the Sheriff's Office and the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred sixty two dollars.
So I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side. Aye. Did you flip up the minus one?
Oh, sorry.
Twenty four thousand.
Yeah, the sheriff was the twenty four.
You're in the court administration.
Court admin, sorry, court admin.
Amount of
fourteen thousand seven hundred sixty two dollars.
Motion accept. I'll make the motion. A second. All fair side. Aye.
Okay, seven point one four, um, the sheriff's software in the amount of twenty four thousand three hundred and thirty seven dollars.
I'll make the motion. A second. All fair side. Aye.
All right, seven point one five, um, seeking your approval to renew our contract with Veritiv. Um, this is to support our U P S, um, our battery backup device that's in the um that supports our server room in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, and that's for a one year.
Accept. I'll make the motion. A second. All fair side. Aye.
Seven point one six. Um, commissioners, this is um a purchase for the coroner's office telephone system. Um, we've been researching our options. We found out that our Mitel servers are not going to be supported anymore. Um, so then that we need to go out and research what our other options were. We looked at three different options, um, and we felt that this was the best, not only um something that we could support internally, but money wise too. It it wasn't high end, it wasn't low end, but it was it was right in the middle and it was definitely cost effective for us to do it this way. Um, so this this fifteen thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars and ninety two cents is not just for the coroner. Um, but it's also going to start the process here at T S P. So we're going to buy um the the main phone server, if you will, and then also get the coroner's building. Um, and then this comes with a three year support also. And then twenty twenty seven, we'll talk about the other phone servers like the M D Js and and the ones that we're going to have to upgrade.
Motion accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, action item seven point one seven. Vote to approve the following appointments or reappointments to the Conservation District Board. First one being Brett Taylor, appoint as Farmer Director, effective term one one twenty six through one, I'm sorry, twelve thirty one, twenty twenty nine. You guys want to do them all together or?
Yep.
Separately, okay. Second, Thomas Murphy, reappoint as Public Director, effective term one one twenty twenty six through twelve thirty one, twenty twenty nine. And Scott Metzger, reappoint as Commissioner Director, effective dates one one twenty twenty six through twelve thirty one, twenty twenty. Should should that be twenty nine or twenty six? Okay.
No.
No, it's one year.
Okay, twenty twenty six.
Good call, Leslie. Makes third one's.
Yes.
I'll make the motion. A second. All fair side. Aye.
Okay, action item seven point one eight. Vote to approve the following appointments slash reappointments to the Agricultural Land Board. First one, Dean Bustler, reappoint, effective dates one one twenty twenty six through twelve thirty one, twenty twenty eight. And Dan Dorman, appoint, effective dates one one twenty twenty six through twelve thirty one, twenty twenty eight.
Motion accept. I'll make the motion. A second. All fair side. Aye.
Okay, action item seven point one nine. Vote to approve the following appointments slash reappointments to the Housing Authority Board. The first one, Ken Young, reappoint, effective dates one one twenty twenty six through twelve thirty one, twenty thirty. Second, Rick Armstead, appoint, effective dates one one twenty twenty six through twelve thirty one, twenty thirty.
Okay, motion accept. I'll make the motion. Very excited. Again, we want to thank all the members of the different boards, ones who are being reappointed, new ones for stepping forward to serve their communities. Thank them for their time and energy, as they serve diligently in these these very important boards throughout the county. And as noted earlier by Jenny, there are openings. If anyone's interested, please submit an application to the different boards that are available at consideration so that we can fill these boards so they provide the services. Thank you. Mr. Collins, only thing I have today is, um, this Saturday, as we cross America, numerous cemeteries um throughout our county. I've attacked veterans for the times and locations of those cemeteries, but they look for volunteers who are coming and lay the wreaths at the veterans' graves. Honor them at this time of year. So it's a fantastic organization that does service to remember our fallen veterans.
Yeah, I would, um, I would also just re-thank the the appointees for those that are free serving and those that that are newly appointed to their positions. We do appreciate the time that's invested and I would thank our own Commissioner Scott Metzger. He's been on the agriculture for for conservation districts for quite a while and appreciates that he gives up his evenings to to do that on behalf of the commissioners. Um, you know, obviously today, you know, somewhat of a little more difficult of a meeting, like came into some salary board issues with, you know, personnel is always difficult. Um, you know, we don't want to affect anybody's livelihoods, uh, but at the same time, or or services, you know. Uh, but at the same times, there's some things that we, I I feel strongly that if it's not in the budget, we have to evaluate that. Uh, we we have worked very hard at the budget as a as an entire team here at the county and 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 I truly say it's been the entire team because we have department heads that have probably not so wantingly, but have reduced their staff to make things work for the taxpayers. We we will hopefully pass the budget in the next week that is the first in many years that doesn't dip into the savings account. Um, unfortunately, it also came with a with a tax increase, which is painful for for everybody, especially when I hear the local communities all raising taxes as well. Continue to try to keep those costs in line. Um, it it is hardening when you when you make votes of a no that affects a department and personnel. Um, I know we have the word of all three of us that as time goes on, we continue to evaluate. If we have made cuts that have affected um services within the county, those will be evaluated. Uh, but sometimes you gotta take a step backwards before you go forward, and this was definitely the year to take step, taking a step backward. Uh, we will look at what can be changed as as the years move ahead. Uh, I appreciate what everybody's had to do and I appreciate the the being able to have conversations and votes that maybe aren't always together, but uh, shows the the taxpayers that we are doing our jobs and trying to do what's right, so. Appreciate the support of of the other commissioners, our controller, our financial team. Uh, this has not been an easy year. We're glad the year's over. Uh, we look forward to uh the next year, next like say next next week, we should be passing the budget. Um, and, you know, I don't want to lose the the good part of today's meeting. You know, we we do have an asset in this county that's been turned around by putting eyes on it in the golf course is is what I'm referring to. Um, you know, as I read Facebook comments last week, the the poor golf course gets gets attacked immediately, you know, golf course, golf course, golf course. Golf course has given us a check now, I think, uh, at least for three years. Definitely the two years that they've given us one from the parks since they promised.
Yeah, but they're giving it additional ones. Third year in row.
Additional car payments plus a profit, so um, that that's all you can really ask for and and it and it does create a a a quality of life for the golfers that exist in our in our county. I I realize not everybody's a golfer, but for the ones that that it exists, it's affordable. It gets them out, you know, we have a lot of retirees that are over there on a daily basis, and I think, you know, most importantly, that um Commissioner Messina brought up, or no, actually it was our solicitor, Mr. Canyon brought up, um, a lot of tournaments over there support a lot of our nonprofit agencies, so that's huge too. So without that, you know, maybe not that the we're looking for taxpayers' money too, that they are able to go over there and earn um with a with a tournament, so they've done, that that tournament's is unbelievable for us as a community, so. I thank them for that, and I wanted to add on a positive note that yes, we have people giving us money, which is nice.
Yeah, I want to go back to the budget for a minute, and it was a very difficult budget. And, you know, like we said before, we cut twenty three, twenty eight million out of the budget over the last two years. And you can you can like cut so much till it starts to affect services. Um, and it's painful to have to raise taxes, especially this year. Um, we haven't raised them in eight years. Three increases in twenty one years. So the county has has done their due diligence not to just pass increases each year. And uh, but when you live in a borough or a township, they're raising at the same time, in the school districts, they raise them at the same time. It's it's hard because all those add up on a person's income and it's very difficult. As as you you talk to me, you can understand that, you know, some of these officials are going to be paying, you know, not just a half mil with us, but maybe as much as a mil and a half with all the other entities. So, you know, we we look at our neighboring neighboring areas or counties, everyone's hurting. Bradford County raised theirs one point six five mils. That's enormous. Dolphin County had raised theirs twenty two percent last year. They're looking at another fifteen percent tax increase this year. So that's thirty seven percent in two years, Dolphin County. York County is looking at a fourteen percent increase. Lancaster County is looking at a ten percent increase. So even with our half mil, I believe it was seven percent, seven percent. So we're still, you know, but we have to get that fund balance built back up and it's important that that we continue to watch the money. We still have a lot of things that we're working on going into the next year to help reduce that budget even more. So you're going to see more coming down the line coming into twenty twenty six. Ideas that we're doing to try to streamline services to save money. So we're not done yet, so we're going to continue to make those hard decisions. Same time, um, get that budget down even further number so that we can continue to save money and provide those services.
I I just want to add to that too. So we've been, you know, we talk about cut, 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 but we we're also, you know, for anybody listening, we're also looking for additional revenues to come in. So we are, we've worked very good, um, Commissioner Metzger's really kind of led the charge. We've worked very diligently in in trying to get our sixth floor rented. Um, so that's been a vacant spot where we kind of, it became the uh, you know, the junk drawer in your kitchen that you can't imagine how much stuff you actually have in that one drawer. That's what our sixth floor looked like. Um, you know, thanks to our facilities people and getting some work done downstairs, if voters could move out of the sixth floor, uh, we're we're getting that vacated that we can get it rented and and he's been diligently working, uh, you know, with a with a new tenant for the sixth floor. So we we can get that rented. That that's income coming in, and that's long-term income that comes in, you know, so we've also looked at other revenue streams, not just cotton. So we're we're hoping to have new revenue streams too, as as they become available to us.
And we appreciate the courts what they're going to be doing, you know, going after individuals that owe cost and fine money to this county. And has continued to grow over the years. And there are people out there that that can make their payments. I I refer back to when I was an agent, we had, I had a gentleman in front of us who uh, they want to make a twenty five dollar a month payment. And I asked Judge Levac to stand up on the bench. And I looked down at his sneakers, just Googled them online, they're over two hundred dollars. My girlfriend bought them. Well, then your girlfriend could bring it down to twenty five dollars. In the meantime, you can have a seat upstairs and hold it, so. And uh, you know, those kind of things. And uh, I remember an agent sat next to me and telling the client, you owe you owe money, and he said, I can't afford it. Yet that night, he ran into that client pushing two TVs out of Walmart and a cart. So there's people out there that play the system that can pay the cost of fines. Courts are going to make sure that going in twenty twenty six, they pay them.
Um, so I do, I I want to echo again Canyon's comment about the uh the golf course and the tournament, and I tell him all the time, like, if you have something to say during one of these meetings, you know, feel free to say it. And he always says, if you get through a meeting and the solicitor doesn't have to speak, it was a better meeting. So that's it's impressive that he uh he had very good, very good today. Another thing I thought about, because I can still see the checks sitting over there. Um, that's money coming into the county. It's not just always county residents. There's people from Union County, Northumberland County. There's a lot of offers that that bring their money into our coffers, um, which is a benefit as well. Um, the last thing I, on a social um, you know, we talk about the quality of the community and all the the neat little things that that um Lycoming County has. And uh, this weekend, uh, the Community Theater League, they're doing um Charles Dickens, um, The Christmas Carol, and it I it might be sold out. It's the Christmas show always sells. I know the other day I was talking to someone, there was a couple straggling tickets for tonight. Um, but I think that was it. But um, if it it is a, it it's a great entity. I'm I'm fortunate enough to be on the board. Um, if you're looking for a a Christmas gift and you're looking for something different, if you've been to the to the Community Theater, which is right over here, it's a small intimate, I think there's a hundred and sixty five seats or whatever. Every seat's a good seat. Um, you've been there, you know what I'm talking about. If you haven't been there, you can go on their website and you can buy tickets for shows that are scheduled. They have the rest of the season scheduled all the way up till the summer. Um, so uh, it is, it is a neat thing to be at. I've been at shows. Uh, the last one I was at was Jacqueline Hyde, which everyone knows what Jacqueline Hyde's about. So I've been at shows that I knew what it was about going in, and I've been at shows that I didn't know anything about going in. And I am always shocked at the the talent that our local community has, whether it's teenagers or whether it's adults. And you see these people and you you see them act and you hear them sing and you say, my God, what is that person doing? They say, oh, he works at U P M C or she teaches high school or whatever, and it's it's amazing the the amount of talent. Um, and then the the directors who essentially they get a stipend of like a hundred, like they, it's basically all volunteers. And um, so it's something to consider uh tonight if you can, if you want to try to sneak in, I I I, there may be a ticket or two left. But just going forward through the Christmas season, and again, it's supporting something uh of our area that makes our area special. And it is a nonprofit and it's it's through the ticket sales is how they keep going. So if you're looking for that last minute uh stocking stuffer, uh, go on their website and look for tickets for the update of shows in January, February, and I'll be going through. And uh, that's it. Done.
Thank you. Other comment? The audience? Okay, any online?
We do have some online, and I just want to preempt this by saying I might be reading these out of order as they are appearing online just to have it flow properly. Um, okay, so comment from Mr. Thomas Adams, three, six, one, four. Good morning, Lycoming County. I received an email yesterday from an acquaintance asking for a small financial favor. Be very aware of these types of emails. Not only was the message strange, not grammatically correct, along with the vocabulary being off, the sender in reality would not send me such an email. However, the real issue is the sending email address was correct, but the return email address is completely different. If someone gets fooled by the message, look at the sending address and the return address very close. There will be a discrepancy. I emailed the thread to the known address to alert my friend. Always be. Always be alert to these email scams. I realize most people may be aware of these things, but if you have elderly people in your life, please offer to check their email activities as often as possible. Thank you for your dedication to our county. May God bless America and may God bless Lycoming County. Next comment.
I just, I want to jump in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, was that Tom?
Correct.
That is a very good point and I've, um. Yeah, I'm at that age, I'm fifty four, so I I've been doing email now for a long time and I've been. But I, you know, I have friends and I I basically have one friend who whenever I see something, well, I have more than one. But anytime I see something sketchy. I'll give a screenshot and send it to him or whatever and I have that checks in with someone who's way more tech savvy than I am, so. If you are, you know, even the older people who they try to to prey on. Um, do never be embarrassed to ask someone younger. Like Shannon was just talking about, where's my eight year old grandson, he could get me. Ask, does this, does this look legit? And my friend just looks at it and to these like, no, that's fake. And there are people who get it and don't ever be afraid. Um, that 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 was a very good point that taught me.
Yes, thank you. Next comment from Clover Smith, J two K. Has the golf course ever paid back the one million dollar loan from the Lycoming County landfill? Is it true that you have once again taken money from the Lycoming County landfill bank account to cover the county's financial shortfalls? And if so, is that counted as a loss for the landfill? And then same from Clover Smith, J two K. Is it proper protocol for Shannon to be voting on a commissioner meeting? Um, just to clarify, and in the rest of the conversation, there's some some response to that. Um, as far as, uh, voting, I did not vote. I was just presenting the nine one one updated. Um. Uh, rate schedule, uh, to the commissioners and I think probably what you heard was Nikki. Um, the controller who does have a vote within the salary board and and I don't know if you can see. Her offline, but I believe that was her voting on that, which she has a right to vote to that and Caitlin Jade was speaking to that.
Now, to answer the question, no, you don't vote. That's not, you don't get a vote, you didn't vote. Um, so that is, that is a good clarification.
And and I probably shouldn't, but I'm gonna answer since I have the the commissioner over the landfill. Uh, the landfill. I will clarify this one more time, has not made any money for this county. In ten plus years, has operated at a loss. It has given us a host fee of one point. One to one point five million dollars each year that we have returned to pay their expenditures. We are operating at a loss annually over there. This year's budget started at a loss of four point five million dollars. That was the first true budget presented to the commissioners in probably twenty years. We've adjusted that budget. We've got it down to a break even. We've raised rates. Rates were not raised at the landfill for over fourteen years. We've raised the rates. The three of us have taken the negative phone calls from the haulers. We've taken letters from out of county haulers that aren't happy with the increase. Um, because they've got away with not paying those. The same fees that other. Um, landfills around us have had. We're trying to make it be profitable as the as the golf course. But it has been a huge undertaking. Uh, I I really get, I I hate to sound like a jerk here, but I really get discouraged. That everybody thinks that this county has stolen from a landfill. That has not produced a profit. I don't know how many times I can continue to say that.
Well, I I will say in defense of those people. You know, I used to come to the meetings where people would say the landfill is making money and the landfill pays for itself and and we heard it over and over and over. Until we got, um. Better financials, clearer financials and we saw the whole picture. Um, but they were told for years and years and years and years that the landfill was a cash cow. I said it with the former director and I asked him, my blank, my second year. He says the recycling center is a service to the community. It's losing money. It's a service to the community. He said, what about the transfer station? Eh, it might make a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand a year. I said, what about the landfill? He goes, landfill is making money. So that was from our former director. And, uh, and yet it was reported every week. Yeah, they were and and in the meantime, uh.
I sat for an entire year and as I was, uh, made the decision to run for county commissioner and every week. Remember RMS pays their own bill, remember RMS pay, they they pay their own bills with some funding from from, um, the county commissioners of. Uh, taxpayers money, so that, you know, as I, I had a conversation with one of the, one of the haulers and I, he said, well, I'm gonna have to raise my prices. I said, I understand that. I'm a, and I'm a consumer. Well, I'm gonna pay you more, take my garbage away. Understand that. But you know what? I have, I have children, so I might have a a full bag of garbage and my mother, who lives by herself, has a little half a bag of garbage. But she still is financially supporting the landfill. With her tax dollars. Equal to me. And that's not fair to her. I should pay a little more. I got, I got more garbage to throw out, so I I'll pay more for the garbage. Um. Some people probably know exactly what they pay. Weekly mine fluctuates. I don't think, I don't think my garbage bill is very expensive, so I I don't mind it if. My hauler has to raise my price next year because the county is going to become. At least break even. For the first time at that landfill. Um, and and to the point of. The county commissioners taking money from the landfill. The landfill owes twenty seven million dollars in bonds to the county. So those bonds are in the county's name. But RMS. Was the benefactor. Whether it was trucks, buildings, roadways. Uh, uh. Making the 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 space available for the garbage. But there's twenty seven million dollars worth of debt that is in the county's name. Came, the 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 money went to the landfill. So even if we took a million dollars out of there to put back in our pocket, they owes twenty seven million worth of. I mean, they're paying the loan. I mean, I don't, I don't mean to make that sound bad. They're paying those loans back. But there are loans out there for twenty seven million dollars and if it was a cash cow. You wouldn't be borrowing twenty seven million dollars. And the, uh. The alarming thing is what we found out about three weeks ago is remaining space. There's not enough revenue there with current fees. To cover those bonds. So that's terrible mismanagement. And so we have to get the, um, permit for new land we acquired. That would extend the life of the landfill about another sixty years. And that permit, uh, needs to be applied, should have been done two years ago. By the staff over there for when it hadn't been. So the permit needs to, needs to be applied. Uh, so we can get that, that, uh. Land that's been obtained by the federal government. For a new field, so we cover those those bonds going forward. But for for the longest time until recently, I think it was last year. Everything came out of the general fund. And, uh, you know, as their expenses were coming out, millions of dollars worth of equipment was coming out of that general fund. Now we have it so they have their own account, so it's separated with the way it should have been. Also. Okay, back there?
I'm dying there.
When Commissioner, or, uh, Sar came to her, Sar was over to the landfill. When he retired. When two new commissioners came to ask Commissioner Sorban to take over the landfill. And put some eyes on it, which he did. Done a fantastic job doing so. It's important going forward, uh, that that host fee remains in place. Uh, that host fee is paid to the county and it's paid to Brady Township. So when they say we're taking this money from, we're not, they're paying a host. And and that's a loss. So if it if it was privately held. It would pay the host fee. Through the county. And that would make about one point five million dollars to the county. Um. We, we made the decision for for their own books. To waive the host fee, just so we saw true numbers. It doesn't mean they don't owe that host fee, but right now they can't afford to pay the host fee. So they're not operating at a profit. Because they can't pay what legally they're obligated to pay to the municipality that they sit in. Thank goodness, they, we do continue to pay Brady Township because that's, that's a large number for Brady Township to get. They don't get one point five million, but they would get a few hundred thousand dollars. Um, for the fact that their community is impacted by a landfill. And if it was, again, if it was privately held, those numbers would be paid in those municipalities. Um, and I and I will say, because I do get a little, I obviously get a little passionate about, um, you know, to Commissioner Messina's point. The 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 entire staff over there. Never knew the real financials. Um. I don't know where the lack of communication, if it was the director and the director of the county that kept kept things. Hidden, but I I can guarantee you that the staff at the landfill. Has been oblivious to whether they're making money or not. They all believe that they have made money. Um, listen, that's a great staff over there that is working very hard. Um, they're gonna be, they're part of the solution of turning this thing around. Um. But again, it's as as we talked earlier with the entire staff here in the county. It's doing more with less. It's changing habits that have existed forever. We're not gonna buy the most expensive trucks anymore. We're not gonna buy. The top of the best of the. Equipment. It's gonna be middle of the road because that's what we can afford. We can't afford what we were doing in the past. It's it's proven we can't afford that. And they do, they do hard work hard over there. They do do a good job, but, um. What we were informed recently was they were the only landfill in the nation. That had not raised their prices. Since COVID. They hadn't raised them since two thousand, I believe, eight. And, uh, but especially since COVID. Only one in the nation. So, um, that was, that was a red flag. So now going forward, we're gonna continue to. Work on this issue. Um, you know, it's the business model over there. Two commissioners went over and spoke to them. Um. I had a meeting that day with the city here. And they're. They're, they're permitted to take two thousand tons per day. They average twelve hundred. Now, any business model that says you bring in fifty five percent. Of your capacity. With the overhead that you have in equipment and staff, you're never gonna make a profit. You have to get closer. That two thousand ton per day to make a profit. Or operate in a fifty five percent capacity. If they get near the two thousand ton. Well, then we'll go talk to the state about getting a permit for three thousand. On day, we'll increase capacity. But. Let's have a conversation when you get to eighteen hundred. You're twelve hundred average. So they need more business. And and you're never gonna make a profit at twelve hundred ton.
Almost like DEP knows what we have to do.
I don't give them a lot of credit, but, you know.
So they seem to know the numbers and they know where we need to be to be profitable.
Right. Sorry, we interrupted you.
No, you're okay. Actually, everything had been done, but we do have one new comment. From Lee Lobsher, six, four, five, eight. Is there any more news about the Chance aluminum development?
Um, yeah, they were in town. They were in town. We we signed a deal with them. They now own the land. Um. They're not sure exactly when they're gonna break ground. Uh, they have projects, um, around the world, really. But he's excited. He wants to get, he wants to get going as soon as he can. He's working with the state. Um, he's a very energetic. Owner.
At least.
To say the least, and he. He hates the government so slow. So because he's a businessman and he's been very successful. Um, but he'll be a great, I mean, he already owns. Plant and labor support, has made tremendous changes over there. And this is the expansion over here and he's really excited about, uh. What he's gonna bring to Lycoming County.
I mean, I would expect there'll be movement on the ground this in twenty twenty six ish. I mean, it's it's a few years out from actually being up and running, but. Um, but it is, it's one of those things that people get frustrated with is we say it is in the pipeline. What he was, it was within a month. But it was, it was in November he was here, wasn't he? Yeah, so, so yes, it, everything is still moving. It's just. It's moving slowly like it will, but a few years from now it'll be.
It'll be the first of that kind of plant in the country. So eventually he wants to make aluminum cups. Which you're really starting to replace the plastic cups. Dishwasher and. Logos on our businesses. Uh, so that'll be exciting too, that.
But there's all kind, in battery, there's all kinds of, especially very thin. Um. Yeah, aluminum gets used lots of places that you wouldn't think about until you're told in all the places that it shows up and that.
Yeah, so.
So it's coming.
So their their business model is they make a raw material that then goes to another processor to get produced either into household. Film, this new plan will be car battery films and standard battery films. And then convert as well into the the heavier aluminum for the cups. Uh, but you, yeah, you know, just as we've, we've talked about other developments within the county. Uh, you know, it, this is now, we've sold the land, that's, that's our only part. Of Lycoming County is we sold the piece of land. He now has to work with, I believe, that that's not Brady Township, that's. That Clinton Township, I I don't know, I apologize, I don't know what the township is, but they'll have to work with that township and their supervisors. Uh, work with Penn Dot on the roadway, because obviously there'll be additional traffic, so there'll be a road study. Um, you know, does it need a red light there? Does, I mean, I think there's already turning lanes, so that's taken care of, but maybe. Stoplight, you know, and that all falls on the developer. At this point, he becomes a developer working with. The local municipality, land development. You know, water retention, all all the normal issues. Uh, that could, that could take two years of of doing that development before the building's up. Run, so. It'll be a while, but it is moving forward and it's a done deal, so that's, that's the beauty of it all.
Story to Digger over there. Digger's been a great, uh. Great, uh, business in the county here now. He's about a hundred employees. We were, we were touring that a year ago. So. So you have to have them here also.
We're left with one, there's one more site for an industrial plant, um, in that, in that development that hopefully we'll have. Hopefully we have news in the twenty twenty six of it, of a, of an owner for that piece of it. See it worked on right now. Any other comments?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Well, we've completed our agenda, so we'll be adjourned till December eighteenth, twenty twenty five. And thank you.